Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our morning prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Good morning, everyone. Commissioner Hamley has an excused absence. I will take a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May tenth, twenty twenty-two Commissioners' Meeting.
Second.
Hudson?
I have no comment, so.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding our resolutions that we are going to pass today? Hearing none, we will go to our county engineer first. Representing him tonight is Josh Wolf.
Good morning.
Good morning, Josh.
All right, it looks like we have three resolutions. And first was final plat for Redwood neighborhood up in Brunswick. This is the one off Pearl Road. Then a closure on Firestone Road, and then also a closure on Crensville Road. And then we do have the permit list as well. Looks like there's fifty-eight for the week from May fifth to May eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second. Any questions? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, next up, we have Holly Murin, Human Resources.
Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our, I have three resolutions. On our personal changes resolution, we have two new hires, one in maintenance and one in transit. A rate increase at Office Holder Adults, a promotion at Job and Family Services, a change in leave of absence in sanitary, an end of seasonal in sanitary, an appointment canceled at Job and Family Services, two resignations, one at home and one in maintenance, one probationary removal in sanitary, and one deceased at Job and Family Services. Second resolution is amending the table of organizations for Commissioners Department. And the third and final is amending the table of organization for the sanitary engineer.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second. Any questions? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Scott Miller, County Administrator.
Good morning, Scott.
I just have two resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing a change order to the agreement of NV five. They're the ones that are, are move consultants. And we had them assist in obtaining a furniture vendor. We were originally to be using Staples as they were on state bid and we've used them in the past. And they did an amazing job for us, but they eliminated that division. So we had to go out for bid. And so they assisted putting the RFPs together and selecting a provider for furniture. So for those services, we are increasing their contract from seventy-fourth by, by ten thousand seven eighty dollars. And the second resolution, last week I presented a resolution for the jury chairs for solder. And that amount was forty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars. And there's a delivery and a setup charge included in that that was not included in the resolution. So this is resolution is sending that resolution and adding in the setup and the delivery. And that's three thousand four forty-seven, so we're forty-nine, five oh two, forty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars and ten cents.
So I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
And I have a question.
Okay.
So the original was forty-seven thousand fifty-five.
It was forty, I think it was forty-six. I think the forty-seven might be wrong in here. It's forty-six. It was forty-six something.
So then the math adds up. Okay. I'm good.
Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Next up, we have Denise Testa from Planning.
Good morning, I have one resolution for your consideration, and it is for the approval of fair housing, of a fair housing service agreement with the city of Medina. We've provided their fair housing for, for services for quite a long time, so this is a continuation of that opportunity.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thanks, Denise.
Okay, next up, we have Cheryl Shack from Job and Family Services.
Good morning, Cheryl.
Yes, Cheryl.
I have one resolution. We were approved for a foster care grant, and the resolution is to advertise for proposals for mentoring services through this grant.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have twelve resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the twenty twenty-two appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The second is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The third is authorizing the cash transfer for the social service levy fund. The fourth is cash transfer for various funds. The fifth is authorizing the purchase of five thousand four hundred gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center. We only had one bid come in for this. It was with Ports Petroleum for three point seven one six dollars per gallon. And just to let you know, that's the highest price we've paid so far this year. I mean, we've had a couple times where we've had only one bidder, but we've been averaging about, I guess this is our seventh time awarding yet this year, and we're averaging about two dollars and eighty-nine cents per gallon on average. So we're still about sixty cents below. Yeah. Anyway, the sixth, seventh, and eighth resolutions are reallocating unspent funds in the family first council agreements. So the sixth one resolution is taking fifty thousand from Catholic charities. Seventh is giving forty-five thousand of that to the D V board, and the eighth is giving five thousand of that to the Health Department to make sure they spend out all their dollars. The ninth resolution is amending the purchase of service agreement. This is with Western Reserve Area on Agency on Aging and the Office for Older Adults. They needed to amend their transportation units, again, to make sure that they used all of those within their grant cycle. Tenth is approving an agreement for a wage survey by Clemens Nelson and Associates to update the county's compensation plan and point factor manual. We had asked, following the special Commissioners' Meeting that was held on March second with Clemens Nelson, to follow up on surveying. There are thirty positions that were selected from the wage scales, and they're going to ask counties of comparable size and general fund, and also those that have engineering departments, for example, with sanitary, that hopefully include water, wastewater, and solid waste, to try to see if we need to move all those scales, some of those scales, or what other recommendations they may make. And then, the eleventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the twelfth and final resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of one million eight hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the twelve resolutions.
Second. Any questions?
I suspect the reason why we only got one bid on the fuel is because prices seem to have jumped up significantly just yesterday. So.
Yes.
Continue to escalate.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have department updates. Richard Nelson, building official.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Richard.
The report in your hands, top section, the whopping hundred and thirty-four million dollars year-to-date construction value so far has been permitted this year. Seventy-five percent over last year. That's a big number. And then the middle of the page there, ironically, even though we have permitted more homes in April than over, it's a five-year high, they're all smaller homes, so our, our average new home cost right now is down, well down. That's a hundred thousand under last year's average at three hundred and forty, or three hundred and forty-one thousand. It's kind of an amazing change there. And you can see on the bar graph down below, the home, homes permitted in April, five-year high. It's pretty amazing. Second page. You know, even though the number of new homes is up, the, the receipts for new homes is, is pretty straight, a little bit down, actually. But commercial receipts way up. So overall, we're taking in a little bit more than, than we did last year at this time. So yeah, we're busy, lots of commercial work. It's not coming in so hot and heavy at the moment, but we still have plenty to do, plenty to look at. We're still keeping up good, our time residential. We had eight new homes come in yesterday.
What is that, what is the time right now?
Residential's still around four or five days, commercials, two to three weeks type, type thing. Some, some turn around real quick, some take longer, but average two to three weeks. So we're, we're busy, but we're doing okay. Hanging in there.
So you still haven't gotten the permit for the Westfield Commerce Park? Because that, from what I understand, is going to be a fifty to fifty-five million dollar project.
Yeah, that's a big one. It's, it's interesting, you know, because they've gotten the plan approval. They've submitted sprinkler drawings. Don't have an approval for that yet, but they're, they're real far along for not having their zoning yet, or at least they haven't brought it to us. So we haven't let the permit out. And I'm not sure if sanitary's given them approvals and the other departments either.
Well, they're putting stormwater control in. And they've moved extraordinarily amount of dirt out there. I, I've, I've never seen a project like that where they have moved.
And I think they've got a lot more to move yet, actually, too. Yeah, that's a big project. Of course, everybody thinks it's an Amazon warehouse. Because, you know, whatnot.
Right.
But yeah.
Okay.
That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Commissioners' Resolution. Our first resolution is appointing and reappointing members of the Medina County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Board. We are replacing Steve Robertson with Terry Grace, replacing Lori Salaro with Beth Beal, and a reappointment of Susan Myers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Next, we have, the Commissioners wish to commend the following sixty-seven students for graduating from Junior Leadership Medina County Class of twenty twenty-two. All yours.
Okay, so I'm going to read the list of the sixty-seven.
He has been deemed best at this.
First, we have Jordan Barr, Maile Bohan, Trinity Bonnetz, Autumn Brown, Michaela Burton, Christina Chen, Ella Clapper, Samantha Colbert, Lexi Davis-Romine, Ella Decola, Tarak Doshi, Carly Eckert, Julia Fortner, Sophia Frye, Maggie Galvin, Maya Garcia, Hope Givlakian, Sarah Yu Cosetti, Zach Graham, Elijah Hadler, Marina Helke Adakis, I hope I got that one right, Lindsey Halleck, Elizabeth Hilton, Emma Hitch, Noah Holland, Eva Hollingsworth, Noah Hopec, Caitlin Horner, Matthew Horner, Kaylin Ricks, Lydia Ilg, Colleen Johnson, Dylan Jones, Savannah Kemp, Kayla Cursetter, Matthew Kittle, Allison Kling, Simone Coel, Molly Kabillis, Mia Lapinta, Emma Malakowski, Grace Maslick, Macy Maxworthy, Kiana McEwen, Ivy Neff, Rudy Neal, Emma O'Neill, Nandini Pandey, Preston Penny, Reagan Popson, Braden Brobst, Adam Rico, Miley Roberts, Nathan Sable, Courtney Sanders, Megan Scavuzzo, Sophie Shock, Lauren Schultz, Jenna Shepherd, Bryce Shepherd, Ella Silves, Liam Stevens, Grace Swain, Alyssa Tyne, Ethan Vaughn, Teddy Von der O, and Haley Zagaro. So congratulations to all.
And thank you.
Congratulations to them.
Okay, we have public comment. Before we have public comment, anybody watching live, right now we do have our senior event going on at the Fairgrounds. It's still going on for another couple hours, so if you'd like to get over there, it's a wonderful event. Okay, around the room, Holly? Amy?
Thank you, I just wanted to let you know that we had the McDAC meeting yesterday and reviewed all the applications by the agencies. There were nine different agencies, five, six, seven, eight, that submitted applications for a little over two point one million. We have one point seven five million to allocate. So they went through a couple different SROs in terms of the award of those. Essentially, it's the full funding for the Medina County Drug Task Force, and then distribution of the remaining dollars for thirteen school resource officers for the various different police departments. So we will have a resolution for your consideration on Tuesday next week to award the McDAC grants this year.
So Amy, they awarded a hundred percent of the Drug Task Force, and then like seventy or eighty percent of the SROs?
That's correct. And it's based on the McDAC guidelines that were approved by the Board of Commissioners, where they were prioritizing funding for Drug Task Force, fully funding, provided they were no more than seventy percent of total budgeted amount. Then the SROs and then anything else that would come in that was drug interdiction-type activities.
But principally because of the, I mean, we had over two million dollars in requests and only one point seven five, so.
Correct. So some tough decisions had to be made, and the committee so chose to make the award in that fashion to Drug Task Force, and then roughly the eighty percent to the others that had school resource officers, and that took care of the full one point seven five million.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Richard? Scott?
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. So I just wanted to touch base on the courthouse quickly. We got another invoice from Gilbane for about a million and six. It's about thirty point five percent of the drawdown. And we've got about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars remaining contingencies now. The prior judge in the design of the eighteen forty-one courthouse omitted bathrooms from that third floor. So Gilbane, they've gone out, they've talked to the contract, they've got estimates. Those three bathrooms are three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This has already been deducted from our contingency. So if we pulled the bathrooms, we're at, what, six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars of contingency remaining. So I talked to the current administrative judge, and I said, look, it's, it's three hundred, it's over three hundred thousand dollars for those three bathrooms. So administrative judge agreed to pull those bathrooms and to make that into a hearing room or a conference room. So yesterday, we had a meeting with Gilbane and Bran Stetter Carroll, and Stephen came up with a, a good idea of possibly moving the bathrooms to the connect, the connector between the new courthouse and the old courthouse, because the reason given, the plumbing was two hundred and six thousand dollars, or three hundred and sixty-five. And the reason given as to why it was so high was because of all the unknowns in the eighteen forty-one courthouse. So Stephen made a good point. If we take it out of eighteen forty-one courthouse, we can still put bathrooms at that end of the courthouse, and we get rid of all those unknowns. So I'm going to talk to the administrative judge probably today sometime about that redesign, get his thoughts on it, and the naming pursuit of that. It still comes in at a high amount, like the three sixty-five. We will probably just pull the bathrooms for that from eighteen forty-one, and people, there's still bathrooms on the third floor that just at, in the new courthouse portion at the end by the other leaders.
So to be clear, there's still access on the third floor, they just have to walk a little further.
And the, the, the.
Actually, quite a bit further.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's kind of where we stand with, with that. So I just wanted to bring back to your.
So currently, in the space that you're talking about reallocating, there's a conference room and some other kind of room, if I recall.
There, there, there's a jur, yeah, there, there's a, a jury room, there's two staff bathrooms, and then there's a large conference room or flex area. So the idea was to move that flex area to where the bathrooms were going to be in the eighteen forty-one courthouse, and move the bathrooms to that, that flex area. And there's enough room there to have the two bathrooms, plus to have a, another small conference room or something.
Well, if there are already restrooms in that area, shouldn't that be a problem to really redo the plumbing?
No, they're, they're, they're back to, back to back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be very simple. So it should, shouldn't be nearly, shouldn't be close to three.
Does there, does there need to be three there? Could there be, be one unisex or?
We're, we're actually talking two unisex bathrooms there.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Jeremy?
Of course. Just want to let you know that the final, the inbound scale at the solid waste district will be replaced this weekend. So beginning Saturday morning, the, we're only going to have one scale operational, and that'll be through Monday mornings, similar to last week. So we're, we should be hopefully back to having the two new scales installed, ready to go, maybe we'll say mid morning on Monday.
Excellent.
That is it?
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Josh, did you have anything else? Steven? Mike? Stan, I apologize, I forgot to ask if there was any public comment. Do you have any?
Reserve comments allowed for Scott's presentation.
Would you like to come up for public comment?
Yeah, I just had a few questions really for Scott and a couple comments. First, I did not hear what was left in the contingency fund. And sometimes when you're talking, it gets so low, like if you're watching on Facebook, you can't understand. So it's just very important to be near this, and for Jack, please. How much was left in the contingency fund currently?
If we add the nothing back in, the three sixty-five, we're almost at seven hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred thousand, out of the one point six million. Thank you. And the total draw to date? I did not hear that in the report, and I thought we were going to get that.
Thirty, thirty point five percent.
Total draw, amount of money paid?
No, that's the, we didn't invoice.
No, that was an invoice for one point so many million. What is the total draw?
Total draw is thirty point five percent of the total contract. That's a total, that's, that's what we have been in.
So thirty percent of the thirty million estimate? Okay, thank you. That was my only questions. I have one other comment. I have mentioned to Scott, and I think I mentioned to Bill, but maybe I haven't. I've had two clients express interest in acquiring the professional building. Both are cash potential buyers. Both are insisting to bring that building to become a Class A office building again, like it used to be. It's probably a C or D currently. I had asked if we could potentially get to an appraisal. I think whether you have to auction it or not, you're going to have to get an appraisal done. And I thought there was some type of a maintenance assessment that was done on that building. And naturally, once that appraisal is available and the assessment is available, we'd like to be able to see that before we would make an offer. But again, they are potential cash purchasers.
Okay, before you have any, before I bring Scott up to answer that question, do you have any other questions? Or is that the only other one you had?
No, one other comment.
One other comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, do your.
All right. I don't know if you'd seen the building for Westfield. It's been in cranes. Did you see, see this? Okay, very good. And also, I met with two developers last week that are looking for potentially three fifty-acre sites for office building warehousing. And these are in conjunction with Intel's expansion in the Columbus area. But there's not going to be that much outgrowth along the Interstate seventy-one corridor. So it's wonderful, we showed them eleven different locations in Guilford, Seville, Harrisville, and Westfield Township for their consideration. And also, Seville has on the board two major warehouses turned down at the Board of Zoning Appeals initially because of the height restriction of thirty-five feet. And Carol has brought it back, the mayor, for potential rezoning to allow fifty-five feet height, because that has become the norm. End of comments, thank you very much.
Scott?
So yeah, so Stan brought this to my attention, so I, I did approach Bethany to ask her if they would be willing to take, or take the professional building and sell it, as they are able to sell it without going through a public auction, or listed, I should say. I also, and they are willing to do that, they also suggest maybe allowing the city's C I C to take it. That way they have more control over what goes into that facility. I did talk to Colleen yesterday. I am going to get an appraisal done on that building, so we know what that building is worth. So that's kind of this current status. So yes, the Port Authority is willing to take it when we are ready to sell it. And yes, I am getting an appraisal on the building. And we still have mediation, and we have Ohio State Extension Office in that facility. We have to find a location for those two offices, which I have the location once the courthouse is completed, at least the, the new courthouse. And then we still have the Board of Education. I know that they are in the process of doing some renovations on a building. That probably is not going to get completed, though, until the end of twenty twenty-three. So there would have to be some, I, I guess, there'd have to be some agreement to allow them to stay in that location until their, their building is renovated. So, so that's where we're currently at, Stan.
And I did tell Scott that both of these fires were willing to keep the tenants in the building, because they'd be renovating the other, you know, another half, one half of the time. So it is, would not be an impediment, see to it that you'll save.
Yeah, the, the problem is, is that the Board of Education, they're in both sides of the building right now. They've, they've gone to remote learning, so they've got offices, and they've got remote learning systems in place on, in both sides.
Same floor?
Different floors. They're on the second floor of the east building, down on the first, actually in the basement of the east building, and then they're on the first floor of the, the west building. And I don't know, I don't think they're on the third floor of the east building.
So Scott, what would the advantage be to not auctioning it off?
We can list it at market value. So if we auction it off, you don't know what you're going to get. You may get more, you may get less. But if we actually list it as a commercial real estate, we can actually list what we want to sell it for and get that price.
Or auction it off.
Or auction it off. Yeah, we can do either way. And that's a decision that the board has to make. It just, it gives us options.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Bill, do you have anything? Do you have anything?
Oh, yes, yes, I, yes, I do, actually. So NOAACA meeting on Friday. We will put on the agenda for the, the June tenth meeting. One thing, it is a Brownfield Projects Awards. And there is, what they did is they allocated the awards to each county. So everybody, each county is getting a project. The Medina County project will be the cleanup of the Chippewa Lake Amusement Park. And then they have, again, one in, one in each other counties. So that will be coming up in, in June. Yesterday, I attended the One Ohio Foundation Meeting. It was the first.
It was the first meeting of the Foundation Board, which technically has not been appointed yet. The incorporator of the Foundation is the law firm of Benish Friedlander at L. And they need to appoint the initial board members to the board, and they have not done that. But there were, of the nineteen regions, there were probably fifteen regions that actually had representatives there. And they indicated that once they get the other regions to appoint their representative, then they're likely to take that action. So the quasi-board is going to meet sometime in the next days and work out a code of regulations that will be proposed to the board in June and then passed. And the Foundation will be officially on its way.
Excellent.
It is coming, and the Foundation is actually going to be a nonprofit organization that will hold, receive and hold funds from the opiate litigation, and continue to receive funds as more and more of the defendants' cases are settled. And then we'll make decisions on how to invest those monies in the various regions throughout the county, hopefully for a long time to come.
Great. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Amy, when you're up there, I forgot to ask any updates on ARPA deposits or?
No, only a communication is regarding families of the incentive of monies intended to put out into the community for the recovery. But no affirmation yet of deposit date, which would be somewhere beginning of June if it follows three sixty-five after, you know, last year's.
Yes, there's just a couple of projects I'd like us to look at as soon as we have confirmation.
I'd like to look at them.
Oh, I would too, but a couple of them that are sensitive to, like, some are kind of, you know.
Timing, right.
Timing. Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you.